...meeting's law notification and adoption of agenda. Number one, number two, please join me in the place to apply.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know, you guys. Thank you, welcome to our board meeting. Next up, we have some recognitions. Do we have some school year recognitions? Do we have none? We have none, okay. Then we'll move to comments from the audience regarding agenda items. We would ask that you come forward, state your name and address for the record, and please note your comments in five minutes. Maybe you'd like to address the board's people. C1. Then we'll move right to approval of the consent agenda, which would be item A, approval of donation from Contemporary Carpet; B, approval of staff resignations; C, approval of CISA loan contract; D, approval of April vouchers and vouchers payable; E, approval of May 11th and June 8th 2015 school board meeting minutes; and May 18th 2015 special school board meeting minutes; F, approval of early graduation requirements or requests; and G, approval of advisory committee to the board's charge and structure; and H, approval of increase in school lunch prices. Now, before we vote, people, we're voting on with one vote. There's no discussion. Would anyone like to pull any out?
A.
B. And G.
Okay, any other ones?
H would...
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which would be called items B, C, D, F. So moved. Move consecutively. Move further discussion. E? No. E, G, and H. Then move consecutively. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Then we'll look at item A, approval of donation from Contemporary Carpet.
Just a huge thank you to Contemporary Carpet for putting on that event and being generous enough to think of us and make that donation for us. It was really awesome.
We all echo your comments on that. So, any other comments? C1, I would recommend to approve the donation from Contemporary Carpet. So moved. Move consecutively. Any other discussions? C1. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, approval of May 11th and June 8th school board, 2015 school board meeting minutes; and May 18th, 2015 special school board meeting minutes.
I apologize because my iPad wasn't empty battery, so I don't have that with me. But I think it was the May 8th meeting that said Stephanie Richter was the clerk on the two-way session. Oh, yeah. That was the only direction.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the May 11th and June 8th 2015 school board meeting minutes; and the May 18th 2015 special school board meeting minutes. So moved. Seconded. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Seeing none. Now we move to approval of advisory committee to the board's charging structure.
Again, going off my memory on this. I thought maybe we should have one last time to discuss this since this was brought to the finance committee and now back to the board. So I am just a little uncomfortable with having the advisory committee have responsibility to investigate the special financing. So I guess I would like the finance committees thinking on that.
I think if everyone made a discussion partly, it was just making sure absolutely clear that financing needs to be part of it because the reference did fail. And if they can come up with their alternative means and do the research, that that might help inform the decision. And whether they would put a directive to the board, then we'll be able to discuss it and get everything with their suggestions.
So you don't think that's part of the finance committee's responsibility, with the financing?
I wouldn't say it's not part of our responsibility, but having another set of opinions will be part. And they're going to be more modesty more than we were. But depending on what they advise us to do, that may open up different finances and happen to be sort of the same as there before. I think another set of eyes are going to be interested.
If you had the ability to broaden through the culture, we need more guys with more backgrounds. I think that's a good question.
That answers my question. Still not sure that I'm comfortable with that, but that answers my question.
Any other comments or questions about the charge and structure? I want to thank Stephanie and the committee because we've been all that important, all important things. And I'm assuming that after this is approved tonight, then we can go ahead and advertise for committee members to do it. And have we figured out exactly how we're going to do this? What the script is going to be? Then you do, yeah, you do the rest. Right, so then? Okay. All right, so welcome. You might be welcome to this meeting. But how are they going to do their communication?
Do you have a chance to talk more about it today?
Not much. We've made a couple of assumptions that have been done online. But that's certainly my paper happy. Should be the district office for them to pick up or ask if they have any help. And again, hoping at some point to coordinate and discussion, to discuss other issues and things to reach. Again, no matter, no matter how many places we meet, there might be somebody that we may have to call and do the best we can. So. And if we can come up with a unique bridge to use or a normal outlets, that would be helpful too, so.
So we have to wait for the financing?
Yeah.
The newsletter, pick it up in the central office?
Yeah, to help in the administration of it together.
And if the last two districts, we could get to. Can I say next name, or I go?
I think that is all. I would have to know if I'm a fact on the chat to maybe see. No. If there were working news letters, so we put that on super value. All this is a function of course. But I have to know if there are contacts as it relates to. Several in.
Somebody's going to start working on this, so we'll back it up.
Well, that's the one field that we have to reach the whole team. And doesn't that go to businesses as well?
I admit that residential.
Just residential. And then they have a issue because in our charge here, it moves businesses. So all we're going to reach is businesses.
Well, we could use the district partners that we already have and start there and possibly nail them, nail them.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if we just, if we, or if I, the rental businesses, if they're smart, it's a long, but it also gets to be a very close. But I think it's a lot.
I'm going to like to go to the board meeting too, and just advertise it. So that people will do that.
So happy to, I'm sure anyone on the finance committee would be happy to work with the administration to help brainstorm and get some chapter around that, you know, next piece. But this was, our main focus was to bring this to the board for votes.
Once it's loaded, we can go. Any other comments or questions on charge and structure? Not an area of consent to approve, charge and structure. So moved.
So.
Move consecutively. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Next up on our agenda, approval of increase in school lunch prices.
My question on that was, it says after consulting, that the price hasn't been increased for several years. How long is several years?
2011.
I would have chosen several years. Okay, that's what I wanted to know on that one.
Any other questions?
I understand that, you know, raising it, so not out, it seems to have any raise up by each year as well, but. Does that mean it's true that you're charging more than the minimum?
Well, it's too early to tell at this point, until the spring of next year when they tell us what our minimum price has to be.
But I mean, does that mean that for this Nancy Creek, what's been written, does that mean that for this new school year, we'll be charging more?
I see what you're asking, and I guess the answer would be yes because the recommendation I made is that we cover ourselves for two years. We can, we can meet the federal requirement. For example, if we went up a nickel, it's a dime, I believe. I was just trying to get us not to have to do it again next year.
I, how would you, in my opinion, would be just, would we have to believe in next year, raising it next year, if that's what you do? My opinion, it would obviously be.
The motion on the floor is to approve the increase in school lunch prices. That is the minimum. So did you have a motion about that, or now you do? Motion?
Just to make sure that we see your hand. So will you lay me through?
So I think that's helpful. We could make a motion to lower the price from.
So there's two versions, two ways, two ways to do it. But the, it's a theory. And like, if there is a motion on the table, I'm going to have to.
That's. Well, do you put the proposal as to?
That's the recommendation.
Right. Increasing the elementary school prices and stuff. So you don't need to make a motion? You can make a motion.
Make a motion to decrease it by five cents rather than ten cents.
So I, I move that the, my actions will provide to me the federal right.
Yes.
So I would, at some point, like a discussion on the benefits of doing the. I mean, I understand some school districts are pulling out of the federal program. I don't know how they do it, like the affordability and all that stuff. But that also allows them to not meet some of these standards that have a number of districts upset that have come about in the last handful of years. That they can establish other standards by, over traditional system and stuff. So at some point, I'd like to entertain some sort of discussion with the, plus the pros and cons of staying with the, with the federal program. But in the meantime, I move that we raise it, make it up to the highest price.
Do you want your second?
Second.
You seconded, any other discussion?
So I would, I don't see this as a, you know, if you have a reason to, you know, that, that, he says something, $2.30.
I don't have an objection to leaving it at the 10% increase either. I do understand that it is still tight for many of our families, but we are still offering a premium lunch that they can buy for. I mean, if they're willing to do so. So I am comfortable raising it at the 10%.
Should be a question of this phase. Any other discussions?
Yeah, I mean, I see John's point, why are we charging more for something if you don't have to? Plus I think there's not having to bring this discussion up next year when next year or the year after you're doing every year turns into more formality than actually having to have a discussion about. You're just keeping with the minimum that you have to increase.
Any other discussion? I would disagree with the five cents. I prefer to stay higher. Discussion on past raising lunch prices is always an operation. The only thing, for the work of the administration is part of trying to, how much we need, that that's the cost, as opposed to just, we do have to always feel attentive, so I'm, I'm honest, I would disagree with that. So I'm not really happy. And then the motion? Is it done for now?
No. No.
Okay, okay, sorry. First one of this, and then. So if you're not in discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again?
Nay. Yes.
Five cents. Right, right.
I'll say.
Five, nay. Two. Yes, okay. So.
Maybe a motion to second.
All right. The motion on the floor to approve 230.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Next up, we have approval. Number six, old business, district goals, performance reports, goal one. And we put one there up here.
Just.
Are you all hooked up? You're not all hooked up? I'm not sure we need to because we. They're welcome. They're welcome.
Just letting people know that he's moving slow because he hurt his back today. Yesterday morning.
I was standing by six o'clock last night, so let's do it.
Happy Bobby's up.
I thought, you know, I'm not trying to distract you. She's, and the goal's at hand, and I didn't want to say, but fortunately for you, this might actually make it short for me. The, the goal that, that I was kind of looking at, if you see my standpoint, that it's part of a long-term goal. This year, we want to focus on year three of our three to five-year plan. Year three was focused on developments of three-level departmental common assessments that are done on the NGSS and all that great stuff. And so part of the measuring for that whole piece was looking at the artifacts we then derive. And so this next slide will show you. I personally make many of the, the, the nine-page pieces, but one piece happens to be seen earlier in the chapter for these days. So in order to keep the public informed on what we do for this chapter for these days, our K-12 managers are doing the regular common assessments. We kept a lot of that, so I don't know if we can reach all of these, but later back in the latest pieces, these are there. And you can see every single professional development that it has outlined about the doing. I need three level within each team and you can see which assessments they would propose and identify. So some are by unit, some are by skills, some are, I remember doing the same stuff. So that's, that first piece of evidence for that to be the goal. And these are, these are all levels that we. The second piece is the, the data mix, which I showed you before. Eric has just migrated over to his post server now. At that point, it was a shared server. And we just made, because the massive data that we're going to do, that is, so, which probably also costs inventory and moving up there. So our work this summer is taking what we have in these four folders from the vertical, these days all the common assessments. Units, lessons, assessments, they're all in the vertical folders. We're going to take all the folders and then we're going to, this is another assessment. So everything's been created, it's not currently in the index. The third piece, that indicated our achievement of that particular goal, the original part of these letters, again, a word to the board, showing this, you know, these letters you saw on the last page, obviously, definitely, like the doctor, to show where we were, our progress, and our common assessments even, or K-12 programs reported to us. But I think, you know, from my standpoint, I'll, I'll move this to the next slide, but the, my effectiveness, this position is not what I, there's nothing that I can take from to use in this, but I'm able to allow or enable or support. That's really not a question of my mission, it's part of the staff, it's teachers. I couldn't go to see these persons, these K-12 programs. I don't have the content expertise in each single content area for each level. They've done a party, there's every sort of practice, there's a lot of, same thing. So as you see in some of these pieces, and as you have seen, they're, they're, they're an educator for the work. My job is to simply kind of do this definition correction for, for. So then outside of that, we'll do a whole bunch of other things. Educator effectiveness, and then we'll make some more for us to talk about. Is it this part of that goal, to talk about common assessment development? I have two main examples that we have for these, but as an aside, the state of Wisconsin Department of Construction contact. And the word stream was that we had a model for the new states. And they actually came up with a site because they talked with our coaches, looked at the documents that we created, and just said that our integration is considered as a part of the state. So thanks to our teacher leaders, our coaches, our K-12 coordinators, and our teachers in this district, who gave us what they are, as well as our principals. The board actually got them to, to ask, which I saw. So they take a few of the documents, and one, I'll show you, people together, kind of keep you on track. It wasn't something that we required of people to use. So these are requirements as in, you know, some of the works is the, the, the. Here, here, it's a, it's a, a lot. But between our, our team and every team principal, these teachers, and coaches, this is an outline, and you'll see it actually has two dates on the right-hand side. On the left-hand side, our links directly to that, your artifact, or as to the agent, or the campaign, or this up now, or the team's game itself. So that right from the very beginning, you can see we're watching rotation and we're looking for, and we're, so, so, so. So everybody's sure that it is the process, and we're, we're tracking our progress. That we do not keep this as tracking, so we, 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 we. The other piece, when we talk about education and teaching and learning, this model, our, our practices. So I designed these movers for every single domain. I think they're not the end game so far, right here, if I, if I, if I, which is the teaching and research. Every single component and its subcomponent has to be, which is a hard measure. And our coaches took it to another level. Next year, they've actually created an interactive PDF that has track lists and they actually typed things in. So that has real classroom doctors, just to, to, to. We're looking at, I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. Looking at focusing our, our PDF each month, so that we're looking at this, this conversation. The way this, the reason this all ties back to that central goal is as we're developing these common assessments, we need to understand what the standard of competition is. We don't understand what the standards are, and what's expected of us, If you don't understand what the standards are, you won't learn what's expected of us. You can't design a, um, assessment. All right. Next piece, um, being very, um, our coaches, what I asked our coaches to do this year was collect, um, not only track the hours that they're spending with staff, but also the feedback from everybody to get, um, but as far as the, um, this is the number of hours that our coaches, however, they have the disrespect to say, um, this is, um, this is not all inclusive because sometimes we're, we're really, um, most of the pieces, um, actually one of our, one of our coaches, maybe stands in the right position, was just accepting, um, she, um, 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 beginning teachers have asked, um, um, this way, I think this is a true testament to when you look at the number of hours that are being given to our teachers, um, in different areas, whether it's teaching and learning, or whether it's actually practice, or assessment, or educator, um, or the testing, um, presentation. Ah, professional development. So a bunch of professional developers, when the team actually, um, did professional development on how should I approach teachers, teacher professional development, there's any type of, um, team teacher, or any different teachers say, oh, you said you wanted to learn, uh, let's say, um, workshop, um, workshop, they put together, or you workshop, workshop, or workshop, um, our teachers. Our, our teachers, um, 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 so we've done this. Yes, we, we had, um, we had a, a PLC survey as well, so you know, which is kind of part of the, um, this, that was one of our highest needs, um, that's about the, um, issue that we should support. And the structure that we had in place is that coaches are out of no shares, they're on, um, part of the principle, um, evaluation, their, um, process, and that's, um, um, nicely , um, um, understanding the world from this global perspective, and the state of the world, and, um, so sometimes, um, more powerfully than their feedback to teachers is their ability to substitute for a teacher. For example, a teacher that's on their, um, show, where, um, our coaches is actually substituting, um, substituting for a co-teacher in your classroom, and, um, yeah, we have teachers who think it's, um, to another, um, so oftentimes, you're, you're saying you have a new student, or you're, um, your teacher, or less, um, I would even go over and observe your second grade classroom, take out some of your teachers, um, 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 so we're using a lot of, um, so, um, I don't know what's.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, I think it was our first year, so it's, it's our first year, it's based on data, and this is just number of hours, um, number of people, every teacher, every teacher in the district has, um, so this is part of a, um, G process to, um, so, so there's been at least contact, um, um, these things are, um, so the reason we look at hours is we're saying, okay, if we're working that much on practice support, this is part of our vision for this year, our vision needs to look at practice support, classroom structure, um, um, looking at, um, from our, um, classroom block, versus our, um, so, um, well, it's not all the, um, achieving this research, this data is what's been, um, PLC as well, for, um, whether it's, um, staff needs, or, um, as far as the survey, um, and then the next one, um, that's, okay, that's, the coaches' quarters are the ones in the, in the newsletters, I'm, um, the coaches gave up the idea of blocking themselves out and maybe provide a similar, the same message, but specifically that grade level thing. So then five focus, and so that's, um, is a lot of classroom, so K-5 will talk about one, K-5 classroom, or K-2, and 3-5, um, the only reason that I wanted to listen there is because it took just a ton of time away from a lot of other things, which has been a great, um, a great investment. Uh, we will hopefully be coming back, so you can see a lot of the presentation at this point, so, um, so, um, we're just, um, setting the course right now, um, so we have some great ideas, so hopefully later August. We were granted a $20,000 grant, um, this year, I provided $5,000, last year, and, um, um, probably, um, three times, um, this is another piece of the state's contact assessment sauce, and the model, um, video that we'll show, um, about this, um, the future, as well as the title before, that I mean, that, um, so, um, um, we actually, um, 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 as, um, as, um, as, um, so.
Yeah, so, you just talked about, um, I was really well taken, like, really, so many trips, um, and, um, and, um, really, um, so. So then the last, um, the last piece that I just want to talk a little bit about is the actual academic achievement team. And I think what's really important here is that, um, it's a vision kind of coming alive, and it's, um, we kind of, well, it's basically four years, where we were, we were not really sure how all the pieces fit together, and we just kind of, um, basically, um, principals and myself, one of them at that time, but working really hard in a, um, world to not know how the pieces all came together. So there's literally a lot of discrepancies in how teachers, um, not talk, basically on top of those schools, just come on top of, um, um, when I was, um, talking about it, because we were so busy, we were so hard, um, basically, so, yeah, this team has been all about, let's listen to what people need, let's listen to what the state has to say, let's look for our achievement targets, um, to be able to build a vision around that. So that, this team, and I think that's already an organization we're presenting this year, is really important, and what's really, what's really important is that it did involve everyone. Principals are, are about, obviously, I'm involved, but also our ITLs, and Eric Grant, who's gifted and talented, and, um, Collin Roth, who's been involved with you guys in the past, and then you have your curriculum component, about little, with your K-12 coordinators, and then you have the teaching component, with your, um, so the idea is, if school, if schools are all about teaching and learning, and oftentimes, you know, so much graphics, you know, you forget about that. So this whole chart is, if you look at majority, it is about teaching papers, there's, um, there's, um, for many fewer finishers, and there are actual teaching papers, that are actually, um, the charges, um, to be, to be, um, so, um, I'm going, I'm not going to go into detail tonight about this whole thing, but, um, our vision, based upon the PLC data, and based upon what people want to turn this team on, and of course, our school forests, we're, it's almost, we're all about trees. So we're all learning and growing together, and that's going to continue to be our vision. But when we're looking at our, looking at essential questions, guiding everything that we're talking about, and we have, um, the roots being, uh, we're the mindset of structural best practices and technical integration. So what we're looking at next year is really about a plan that will focus on teaching and learning, so lessons and, um, actual teaching instructions, that we have seen in the data, based upon these different, um, essential questions, and then every activity that we do, that we, both ways, um, analogy, measure, structure, best practices, and, um, every time we get together as a teaching group, we take something away from the, um, um, um.
Just one question, I, 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 how do students, you know, these are great questions, one that's, um, how do students, because with better understanding of that, um, some of the tools have changed, I think that's a question, um, how do students?
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, and I would say, um, each student, each student, I mean, because if we get our, um, half, and all of this, well, because there's research that shows collecting, um, that also means there's some, um, so, I would take, um, so.
So then, your, your question is actually the driving question, too, is a little different from what's, um, that, um, lead to that, based on the presentation, is how we look at, um, how we, um, how we engage, um, to engage in dialogue, in assessment, um, stuff, um. So we can get into that in a long time, but the reason I wanted to bring this out was that it, it came to fruition as a result of this year, of quality assessments, and saying, now that we've looked at our standard, and we've created targets, and we understand that, um, we need some assessments that measure the, um, how, um, we need to teach them, we need to talk about how to teach them, and, um, talk about how, um, how we personalize their experiences, and give their, uh, give their, um, quality assessments, so this is the vision of the, um.
So this, the low that we presented, um, earlier this year, was, um, really looking at, uh, starting our freshman students off, and making sure that they were successful, um, and we based that off of, um, a bit of research in, um, the past few years, and looking at your success, whether you freshman year, how that translates to success throughout high school. Um, so we were looking to have ninety-five percent of our freshman class earn a minimum of six credits in order to, you know, track towards graduation. Um, so we presented some information in February about steps that we were taking, um, but based on our transcripts, which just came out last week, um, we did, um, so what our data actually represents is that ninety-six percent of our ninth graders are on track to meet graduation requirements after the first year, and if you look at the breakdown of those students who did math, earned six credits, um, we had, um, one student who earned less than two point five credits, three students who earned less than four credits, and then five students who earned less than five credits. Um, eighty percent of those students are currently enrolled in summer school, that recovery. So hopefully, at the end of summer, and before we start our sophomore year, we'll be able to look at those students, having a higher percentage to start sophomore year contract. Um, with some key contributions, I think, to the success of those students, we have a freshman transition team, um, that met twice a month, um, they established their own charge, where, one month, they were talking about, um, things that were needed to them as teachers, and, you know, what were things that they needed to do in order to help students to be successful, and the perspective meeting was really centered around students. So our grad sponsors took a look at, um, progress reports and other markers, and identified students from, that are assigned to them, and brought those kids forward, we developed intervention plans for those students, and every teacher who had, um, had that student in class, and had an opportunity to talk to one another about what was working, what wasn't, you know, sometimes they were doing really well in one class, and in, um, other classes, and the teacher was able then to share strategies. So at the high school, we tend to segregate, it's all slotted by department, and so you don't frequently, you know, the conversations we have on a daily basis are about content and, you know, strategies for teaching that, and you have to really reach out in order to talk to other teachers who have the same students, where, you know, um, in middle school, you tend to segregate by grade level. Um, so that was helpful in bringing all the teachers who had freshmen together and, and making those decisions. Um, we also had the opportunity to have math interventions, um, with us the second part of this school year, and that was helpful, we identified students then from ultimate classes, um, Mrs. Parnell, who has a science background, so she was able to help with biology and chemistry as well. The other thing that we have commented the second half of the year was one of our teachers, um, who didn't have a zero hour assignment, volunteered to work with students who had failed more than one class, and, um, he actually had them down the social toys in there, um, and they, um, collaborated with one another, and they, he communicated with their parents and provided extra information to them about what, what things were missing, um, projects were missing, and so that extra communication, um.
So what do you think, what, um, to catch up, so what do you think, what actually?
Um, the, the student who is now currently enrolled in summer school, um, it's a residency issue, and, um, is currently not living in.
Is that, um?
Well, uh, I mean, as of right now, it looks like they will be enrolling in another district for, for the fall, um, I mean, there, you know, counselors continue to reach out to them, or, you know, summer school opportunities. Right now, we have a waiting list for summer school, so as students, um, complete their course for recovery, and we're able to call and text students, or, um, we, we, we.
Is anyone else, all the classes? And we, really, can compare, is it the same, or?
No, um, the re, one of the reasons that, um, in previous years, we had our goal centered around ACT, but in order to bring in the information now, we don't have that information, that, you know, it doesn't come out until later in the summer, so we're not able to report on that, so in terms of.
Because ninety, you have ninety-five percent earning minimums, that's, all those classes.
Well, last year's freshman class, um.
You said ninety-five percent of the classes, um, very, um.
Right, right. But when you're, I mean, you're talking, um, in order to, like, set, like, I mean, ninety-five percent is, you know, it's, it's a stretch from the standpoint that you're, you're not talking about the number of students, you're, you know, we're looking at it to, well, nine students, so, math, natively, you have your percentage, and you add it, and, um, so, this is pretty labor intensive, um, you're talking about, you know, some of the, the issues that, yeah.
And I just thought, um, how much value, um, to me, you know, that, um.
Sure. I think, I, I think when we spent the goal, we were looking at, um, it was like ninety, ninety-four, something, so, it's, uh, it's, it's higher than, uh, that's a, because you're talking about, you know, if we can move one student, that's, that's a success.
So just to remind her, like, the real school, um, our goal is to focus on the students who are to be proficiency in reading, um, so we will keep the ninety percent of those students below proficiency to be at grade level, um, by the time we took the, the spring map assessment, or just demonstrate individual progress as if, um, you find whether personalized levels, which could be a, um, model for that sort of thing. This is an example, I shared this with you, um, in January, when we came from the mid-year, uh, we updated, this is how we tracked our students, and this is, um, the sixth grade, part of the sixth grade, um, progress in, what we're looking for, just visually, we want to see everybody at least in the yellow, preferably the blue by the time they were at, um, springtime, and we, they, the kids did really well. I think part of the reason we had such great success through all grade levels, um, was that we were able to bring in a title level teacher, and she was able to work with the children completely that one-on-one, um, because they maybe didn't master decoding, you know, reading code, and so she was able to work on some of those statistics with the kids, um, where in the past, you just everybody, you had teacher interventions, and it was more, um, either a full class size or, you know, several students in the intervention, so being able to really, um, give that one-on-one or two-on-one attention was, um, really beneficial, um, so we met, well, by grade level, ninety-two percent in sixth grade, ninety percent in seventh, and ninety-one in eighth, which comes to about ninety percent, so, we, we, um.
That's the percentage that were below the, um?
Correct. Or demonstrated individual progress, some students, you know, they may not reach grade level because they're two grades behind, but they made nice progress.
So what happens to, um, ten percent of the, um, doctor, or?
Well, if, if you want to look back at screen, call me, um, that was what our, end of your data, um, meetings were about, we talked about, okay, what, what are our recommendations for the next year, so the sixth grade teachers, they've already made those recommendations, that, you know, some kids, they're fine, they're dismissed, some kids are going to continue, um, in the program, so we have a plan, ready to roll, so they, yeah.
You had, you used, uh, she's wonderful.
She's, is, is an actual, she's, she's a, I don't know, Joel, a multiple-time retired, she's tried to retire, well, four times, but she's never stuck, um, she's, uh, I think she's about eighty, almost eighty, but she's just spitfire, and the kids really, like, what?
I just act that way sometimes.
No, but, well, I'm that sharp, and still want to work at eighty, but she's wonderful, she just really has a tail, has a tail to her, so she's, um, thank you.
Again, in a little refresher, we had basically, um, really, I think it's the same goal as, uh, this, we have, this is our first year testing, um, this type of goal, looking at the students who didn't make progress, basically, the map, uh, ranks the students, um, low to high, and Roy and I, we're, um, forty percentile of the forty-first, and then we have data meetings, fall, change, or the spring, you know, we're looking at, we're looking at all the students, okay, two through five, um, from this goal, but specifically, those students who were below forty percentile, and our task this year was to try to compensate many, um, every single student, and, and this year, we, um, we have reading interventions, um, building, um, first time, but this year, we continue to, um, teachers were believing in SLO, because students do not give the threshold to, um, interventions, the teachers, who were SLO, kicked out some of those students, we did something different with, um, the next, um, so, it's, as teachers, interventions, um, data meetings, special education, um, special, um, it's, um, so.
So, um, similar to what they've shared, we, um, we hold the data groups, as mentioned, um, we consider on the table, and we target, um, looking at that forty-four, forty-first percentile, um, because that's what that data explains as, you know, from twenty to those categories of what they consider the overall average, um, and we talk about pretty much everything that's, um, trying to accomplish data points, not just our math scores, we look at our reading benchmarks, that's a lot of what, um, sitting down with the child, listening to the read, um, listening to the read, tell a story, um, asking comprehension questions, so querying, um, different types of, 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 so we look at that type of assessment along the standards of data, the PALS assessment is something that goes up through second grades, no second grade meetings, um, that's, that's a data point that we can specifically, um, have for second grade, but, um, this, this, uh, this notice is through her that she starts in K-four, so we have, um, longitudinal data on students from K-four all the way up to second grade, and then, um, this year, again, we've got, it's a sort of responsive intervention, we brought in a corresponding tool called K-SWAP, which we are using for smaller students, and, and reading interventions, for one, with, um, specialist students, it's a progress monitoring tool that's given on a weekly basis, and that we, we literally can track with, whether in comprehension or, um, influencing, um, the student's progress on a weekly, whole basis, it's a very short, um, two-minute, two-to-four minute, um, call, where, um, this means we're, that's the task, to perform tasks, and the data is, is, so we do have, we're re, very much, um, like, just following just current data, we can, um, weekly data, um, as well, some, um, tests, you know, and , um, getting, um, and it's really neat, because it shows that trajectory of where they are now, and where their peers are, and how, how they get up, to, what has to happen, for them, and, again, the link, has there been a, the data system for collection, um, this is just a snapshot, just deductive, um, so.
It took up this, um, and then, and then all the, how it went to the right, there's also, I mean, would be, um, specific information about, um, how they took the test, or something that's, um, all of that, sensitive information, so we, uh, and, and, we add some reading to this component, ask for results, or, I mean, we keep this information from year to year as well, so this is just one year, we have seven years of data, um, looking at all of these, um, so, so, from my ability, um, out of approximately three hundred students in second through fifth grade, sixty-eight students fell below the, um, forty percentile, um, most students, um, sixty-three, um, performed above the criteria, um, actually, it's, um, it's, um, it's probably ninety-four, but anyway, um, four students, um, fell below the mark, and we specifically looked at those four students, because we have so few, two students who were under two point five, and then two students, um, kind of a head scratcher, more along the lines of, we got data before, um, maybe, not a great, um, assessment, um, kind of, we were also talking about test fatigue this year, we took the, uh, to, um, session, and follow-up, and, 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 so our kids went, don't do test to test. So that's something I.
I would say, too, one of her, one of his children can change, they change statistically, um, so, you know, we have, we have four hundred students, so obviously, we're cool, you know, there's, um. So, we have four hundred students, so obviously, there are cool, you know, there's little numbers coming in. These are very capital numbers in both our schools, I think, but those people are cool. Just this early part of the year is to, and that basically changes things up. The third grade number, in our case, literally goes one student. You know, if you have one student off, that child would have bumped up and scored forty percentile on that. So, once again, it's like, sorry, you want to be a forty-one, be what they consider the average. So, you know, one kid, they were like, no more questions, right? But it is what it is. So, and it's not only, I mean, we're giving the map data, but it's not our only data that we look at clearly. I mean, we really, we know that some kids actually outperform what we expect sometimes on that, and then, we lack that. So, that's why we need more resources.
Good work, good work, thank you. Next up, we, on the new business, Southeastern, trying to compute the lines of the spa cell residential dreamers. We're going to complete a one, this will do fifteen, ten years. So, I just wanted to, you know, the new business, there's nine questions, it's not until a composter, a tour, or a meeting. And then, we're going to have a survey, we'll show them the question. Does anyone have any questions?
The spa cell, that three thousand figure seems, it's been that long.
It's been a period.
So, we're still paying the same amount that we've been paying.
They did a nice job of summarizing, to use it for our...
Any questions with this staff, or any speaking?
Um, next to the decision goals, Angie, Christina, I got a new head, a strategic plan for Wiley, that's why in Chris, in twenty-fifteen. So, I wondered whether we'll work as we're setting the goals and what we want to do in the process, or do we need to write things? Just layer dots in the, in the glass, and, you know, or how we get that achieved? So, we have some goals, yeah, I, you know, the board, being a board leader too, it always has its best priorities. So, what are your thoughts on, you know, all of the smart plans, and sort of look at, contact the board with some ideas? And what to do, to, to... So, it's probably, I mean, if you're involved in a house that goes...
Well, let me ask you this, do we, is this just, follow these goals? Do we try to, like, something, like?
Now, actually, the reason, I put the sheet together is to show all the kind of elements together. Board for a long time, and didn't update a couple of years ago, probably policy for it. The board has always started, uh, stuck with those first actions, those four categories. And then, what we're beginning to do, in a sense, is kind of build a goal, and try to work through the category. So, strategy, almost, to achieve it, for evidence, is our first goal, which was, was to achieve. Being aware of that, right, all the way down the floor, which was the first person management, which, uh, is, yeah. So, the goals, we tried to relate to strategies. But the word, you know, you were, you were...
So, for you to talk, we, 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 we look at this, look at this, maybe we could just set aside time in July to really have a workshop on these goals. Do you want to keep them, do you want to change them? Do they still fit for where we're going? And as, as I'm sitting here now, the, you know, I'm pretty just, easier way to go with this year, I mean, so we're sort of rolling it over this for another year. Correct. But it was sort of, I guess, we just extend the strategic, for another year. We could have a further discussion about whether we want to. And if we do, then, we do that, you know, I think, in the district, setting goals that align the question. Which is on track for that, unless you decide enjoy, and you can make the changes, in which case, they are already down. But we should have that discussion. We'll check on July? All right. Unless anyone says major objections, we should stipulate that, just, well, now, we have that discussion going. For bringings for workshops, actually, for their administration, for... All right. Any other comments? I think I'm going to move to the next student. This discussion, discussing the possible action of cracking the candles, including some students.
This is me. For many years, and qualify that by saying, at least after the late seventies, the local government property insurance fund, which is a branch of the Office of the Commissioner of Insurance, has been providing property insurance for state and local units of government, and doing so at a cost that commercial carriers generally couldn't be competitive with. Rates were many times half of what the commercial carriers charged. This past year, our premium to ensure all of our properties and buildings was twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars. When we got the renewal for next year, the fund was quoting a price of fifty-seven thousand, almost two hundred dollars. They are on the verge of going out of business, state budget, still being debated. Of course, calls for elimination of the fund altogether. And there are people that have been saying, we should start looking for something else. The fund actually is not slated to go out of business for another year, but there's going to be a big rush on people looking for alternatives, I think, next year. Because I figured there was no harm in getting, seeking some bids. For this year, I'm pleased that, while two companies, that our players in the school and government market indicated they knew they couldn't beat the, the local government renewal, even though it's a two-hundred-and-twenty-three percent renewal. EMC did submit a bid of fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And obviously, that's a huge increase, but it's much more aligned with what we've been paying for, wasn't for the fund. There was a word on the street is that the fund is in pretty bad financial condition. The reason for the big increase in premiums, in some cases, districts and the governments have seen three-hundred percent increases for this next year. They are trying to get some of the reserves to back up, but it doesn't look like there would be any effort to save them. I attended a breakfast meeting a few months ago, and one of the top people from the fund, from the commissioner's office, was the speaker, and he said, I have, I'm advising you all to get out and see what you can get for an alternative, because we aren't going to be around for the future. So, I'm, I'm looking for two things tonight. One is statutes that deal with the fund require that a motion has to be adopted by the board or other local government agency to withdraw from the fund. And then, I would also like your approval to accept the EMC bid for this company.
Uh, just a question, one is, how is the coverage compared to, to, uh, the, 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 the way, the, the, the way? How is the coverage?
Um, it, it is comparable, you know, to what we've got in terms of productivity and so forth. There are some additional things that are included that the fund doesn't have. And chief among those is, the fund does not provide any type of risk management service or building inspections. And if that, or the EMC does provide things like that, and that's often overlooked, I don't know. You know, when you look at the fund, you say, wow, what a deal, but you're not really telling the kind of service that we would get out of the, you know.